Well, welcome. I'd like to call this meeting of the Urbana City Council to order. It's Monday, September 27th, 2021. We're holding this meeting via Zoom. Before we begin, I'll read the disclaimer pursuant to the gubernatorial disaster proclamation and the declaration of emergency for the city of Urbana, Illinois, related to the COVID-19 pandemic. And in accordance with changes to the Open Meetings Act, Public Act 1010640, it's been determined that an in-person public meeting is not prudent or safe at this time. Members of the public body will attend remotely using Zoom webinar. Members of the public may attend via Zoom or view meetings remotely on Urbana Public Television through Comcast Xfinity on Channel 6 and 1096, on i3 Broadband on Channel 6, AT&amp;T U-verse on Channel 99, and streamed on the web at livestream.com/urbana. I have to call this meeting to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hersi?
Here.
Ms. Colacetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilken?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here. Next item is approval of minutes of the previous meetings, and that would be for August 9th, 2021, and August 23rd, 2021. Is there a motion for approval?
I'll move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Was that Shandra?
Yeah.
Yeah. Any discussion or corrections? Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes. That motion passes. Additions to the agenda. Are there any additions to the agenda? We have none. Next item is our presentations and public input. We'll do the presentations first. There are three scheduled for tonight. One was carried over from last week. I appreciate the patience of First Followers who were carried over. Thank you for being here tonight. And that will be followed by a presentation by the Regional Planning Commission on emergency rental assistance that's available currently, and then followed by Sheila Dodd presenting the year-end CAPER report and an update on affordable housing in Urbana. So First Followers was invited to present by council members Evans and Wilken, and we will correct Grace's spelling of Grace's name on that agenda. So I'd ask them to introduce the speakers, and typically presentations are 10 minutes. And I'll ask Chris to introduce the speakers. And is he still? Chris, are you there?
If we lost him, I could do a quick introduction.
Okay. Why don't you go ahead, Grace?
Sure. I'll let First Followers, you know, mostly speak for themselves. And another coalition addressing gun violence, they're a really awesome grassroots organization. Been doing a lot of work with the community for, it's been four or five years. They can probably give you more history in their presentation. But I've worked with them volunteering on some cool projects and gardens and things. And they're a wonderful group, so I'm looking forward to this presentation. And yes, thank you again for your patience. I think there are maybe a few speakers. Are you all on as panelists who needs to be?
Yes, Chris gave us names of James Corbin, Angela O'Neil, Josh Payne, and Mark Pellmore. Is that correct? Okay, good. All right, go ahead.
All right, can you hear me? Okay, awesome. I need to share my screen. How do, let me see, share screen. Okay, PowerPoint. Let's share. Okay, give me one minute. Let me see. Okay, thank you. My name is James Corbin. I'm also, I live in the city of Urbana, Illinois. My Urbana resident. I'm a mentor, and I'm also a navigator, a resource navigator for First Followers. And tonight, we're presenting on gun violence, the epidemic that is right now plaguing our community. I'll start with according to the CDC, everyday gun violence affects thousands of young adults seeking, you know, seeking treatment in emergency rooms across America as a result of gun violence. And it is the third leading cause of death for youth ages 16 to 24. It is the number one leading cause for black males at this time in our country as well. And black males are 14 times more likely than whites to die as a result of gun violence. These reports according to the CDC. Black males are, most of violence made up right now is 93% black male and urban gun violence. And gun violence has a long-term negative effect on our communities, as we can see now going through this. And most importantly, as far as the national rate murder rate, the national murder rate is up at 30%, according to the New York Post. So what are some of the factors for gun violence? You gotta, you gotta understand this in order to try to correct this. So the number, some of the number one factors are poverty and/or social and economic disparity, lack of education, skilled training, lack of direction for the young men, having positive mentors around, role models, leadership. And many of these young men come from households with just one parent. Also, buying into the false narrative of manhood, feeding the culture of gun violence, of gun toting as a way of survival, and also believing that there's no one there to, for them to call. So all these things contribute to gun violence, which is why we experiencing an exponential growth of gun violence in our community today. According to the Champaign County Sheriff, there was a, there has been more than 80 killings this year, 80-plus killings this year. And when he was making that presentation at the time, we, we were on the phone and we had got a call, you know, there was another killing then, so that number's up to 83 already. So far, we still have three more months to go in this year, which means we may see violent killings in the amount of 100 this year or more. And I pray we don't, but you know, on this trend that we're heading right now, it's, it could very much be there. Let's see, much of what we're, much of what we're witnessing in terms of gun violence is directly attributed to COVID, the COVID pandemic, which exposed simple cracks in the system and only widened to allow more individuals, such as these young men, to fall through the, through the cracks, the fissures in the valleys, which we, which is why we're preparing or proposing a proactive solution instead of a reactive solution that involving a one-stop model. In contrast, the current model of working in independent silos. Okay. So here's a visual representation of the current model versus the new proposed model. As you can see, the current model has each group working in silos or separate. And the communication is either disjointed and possesses a barrier, like going through a referral system to get services for an individual person. Personally, I spend a lot of time, a lot of critical time sifting through these referrals to try to get help for someone who is, who is in immediate need of assistance. This is a cumbersome, timely process. Result. Harm, and needing more resources to get them back in a healthy position again. Because once they get over a certain point, and, and you know, we, if we don't move fast enough, it takes twice as many resources now to bring them back to a healthy position again. Street-level intervention methods, such as, excuse me, such as the Richmond Models, used in Richmond, Virginia to curb gun violence amongst the youth, has been very effective in mitigating harmful activity. Outreach, outreach in general is a critical part of the spectrum because it keeps a current pulse regarding upcoming problematic issues within the community. This gives us a jumpstart on stopping issues with less resources before they turn into larger ones that need to have a gamut of resources behind it, just to get it back into functional position. Again, in short, what my, me and my colleagues and myself are proposing is a systematic whole-person approach versus which uses a wrapper, oh, I'm sorry, a systematic whole-person approach, which uses a wraparound format to look at the individual's problem in the multi-dimensional format. The goal is to resolve the chronic problems faced by these individuals and stabilize them much sooner, much quicker, before we have to get to a reactive position and have law enforcement come in. This model that we're proposing that we believe is the future in problem-solving community issues and nullifying gun violence within the community, which is why we're proposing this one instead of the current model. We also see that in the new model, we could react with all-in-one center. We can react faster, coordinate team effort. We can have better accountability. Instead of right now, we have an overlapping services, but these services are not measured, so we keep a measurement and see what is effective and what's not. And again, the whole-person approach. This is a more efficient model. And with that, I'll conclude my presentation and pass it on to one of my other colleagues. I believe Mrs., Mr. Pellmore, or either Josh is online. Let's see, I gotta stop sharing my screen. Give me one minute. Oh, here you go. Okay. All right. Yep, so that's my, that's my presentation. Is, is Josh online? Well, save Josh for last, actually. Mark Pellmore or Angie?
We do have Josh as an attendee. I've promoted him to a panelist. Josh will just need to accept that and be promoted to a panelist. I believe Mark Pellmore was on earlier as Business Elevator.
Yeah.
And we do have someone on as First Followers as well. I'm not too sure who that is. That could be Angie.
I don't think that's Angie O'Neil, but you can let Mark Pellmore go. Not sure. Where is Angie?
I don't think Mark is still with us. He was with us as Business Elevator, and I promoted him, but now I see that he has since left.
Okay, he probably must be having technical issues. Well, go ahead with Josh then. Yep.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Hi, Josh. Can I interrupt just a second?
Yes, ma'am.
At this point, there's about one minute left in this 10-minute period. Does the council wish to extend for another 10 minutes?
I'd like to make a motion to extend for 10 minutes.
Okay, sir, a second.
Second.
Can we take a quick vote? Phyllis, can you call the roll?
Yes, I will. Thank you. Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. Okay, go ahead, Josh.
Hello, hello, everyone. Thank you, Mayor, so much. On behalf of everyone at First Followers who's presenting tonight, I just want to say thank you for allowing us that extension of time. I just want to share with you all who I am a little bit. And a little bit, I'm gonna give a little bit of a different take tonight, just a little bit of the work that I do in the community. I want to share a night that, that was pretty eventful. And first of all, my name is Josh Payne. I've done anti-violence intervention work and outreach at-risk mentoring for about seven and a half years. I've helped develop programs and models. I've had extensive training in de-escalation, violence mediation, and crisis intervention tactics, restorative justice practices, trauma-informed training, and all sorts of, all sorts of extensive trainings around violence prevention. Currently, I work for CU Try in the Healing Communities Effort with the Coalition of Champaign that is working with the Walk is One in correlation to try to positively impact and surround people with resources and community strengths in a time of needs with ongoing support and connecting them to other programs. I serve as a community responder. That's really like a first frontline violence prevention-type work individual for, for the program currently. I want to detail the night. Obviously, like, this is different for me, sharing this kind of work, but since it was really close to home, I feel that it's very responsible of me as a, as an activist and somebody who's very, very sincere and serious about the work that I do in violence prevention, to share the events of September 11th. I live in Aspen Courts, the newly remodeled and opened Aspen Courts. Me and my daughter are blessed to be able to have a home here after I was homeless for about a year, a year and a half last year, or during, at the beginning of, prior to the pandemic and during the pandemic. And on September 11th, a 32-year-old young man by the name of Kendall Jones was, was killed and murdered right here. Now, a lot of people don't know, but the street that I live on, there's Learman Street that, that comes by the community garden into this complex, and there's Hunter Street, but on the backside of the street is Ivanhoe Way. And that's where that 32-year-old young man lost his life. And some of the individuals who I've been mentoring in this complex, but younger gentlemen, younger boys, were severely impacted, were family with that gentleman. That was at 4:30 in the morning. We were rattled. I saw, I counted over six or seven cars myself in that little area that were littered with bullets. Kids and family members, like, this has crossed the line beyond even needing to have meetings like this. And I'll just wrap it up with this, that at the end of the evening, on September 11th, in response to that, there was over seven shootings that took place from the time of about 10:45 to 12:45 on September, that, that Saturday evening. And I was receiving calls from the families that I mentor because so many shots were going on in so many different locations around the town. I don't even get on the scanner, and community activists were blowing my phone up, reaching out to me, encouraging me to take a look what's going on on the scanner as I was receiving calls to help get kids out of parties and other, help get parents to locations or ident, like where these parties are to get kids to safety. It was a very traumatic night, but if I had, would have had a centralized location, a one, one, one instant, one space that, that, that was a collective community effort that was open, that was operating and operational, a one-stop shop. In that moment, I could have negated and been able to disrupt so much of that violence and be able to receive information to get people to safety and getting people more aware of the potential threats of violence so much more rapidly. Because this, this, I take this work very seriously with these kids that I, that I, these, these boys that I'm able to work with and knowing, these families that I endeavor to, from my experiences in the streets, to try to protect their kids from it. And if I had that space, what James just presented to you guys, it would be an absolute game changer in my line of work. Please consider this, and thank you. Thank you so much for your time tonight. God bless.
And I thank you. And I have, First Followers was on there. Just seen James. What happened? There you go. James, you ready? Go ahead.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you very much, Mayor and City Council, for giving us this opportunity. I'm, I know Mark Pellmore is having some internet difficulties, so I'm just gonna quickly fill in for him. I think both James and Josh have given you kind of an idea of what's inspired us to try to come together and build a model that's something different than we've seen so far. I think there's a general recognition that what's been being done so far to address the issue of gun violence, community violence, domestic violence, is not, has not been effective. And we've, so what we need to do is, as Josh has emphasized, come together. Bring together people like Josh, other people who offer trauma-informed care in the community, who offer business education, who offer general education. Put these kinds of services into a center that's a safe space, that's community-owned and community-driven. And this is the kind of intervention that really attacks the root of the problem and provides an alternative to people. It's not helpful to tell people to give up a gun, to drop a gun, if we can't provide an alternative, and that alternative has to have resources. So this is what we're pushing for, is a, a one-stop shop, a community center that brings together a range of providers in the community, working as a network, working as a collaboration in order to bring the kinds of services to the people who are impacted. And it's not just people who are, who are out shooting, but it's also their family members, their community members. We have an entire cohort of the population that's been traumatized by this violence. We know that that cohort is growing every day, and we need to be able to provide the kinds of support and resources that will address that. So I hope that as you move forward in terms of looking at how to handle, you know, how to handle the, the ARP funds and how to address the issue of, of community violence, you'll think about how, what measures might be effective in terms of dealing with the enormous problem that we had that's, that Mayor Marlin described last week really as a, as a, as an emergency. It's an, it's an epidemic, and we need to come together to put an end to it.
Thank you, James. And that will conclude our presentation. And again, we'd just like to think about the, the model, the current model versus the old model, where you see the joints and the fissures. We want to close those joints and fissures and catch these individuals, you know, so they don't fall through the cracks and move faster and have a systematic approach and a whole-person approach to mitigating this problem of violence that we're currently seeing. Thank you.
We've got time for probably two questions, if anyone has a question, and then we'll move on to the next presentation. Sharice?
Actually, Grace had her hand up before me.
Sorry. You have to remind me to look for the little hands. I'm not as good at that as I should be. Go ahead, Grace.
Thank you. Thanks, Sharice, on that. About the timing too, because I thought it was the presentation that's timed. We don't typically time our questions.
No, well, this is right, but we've got two other presentations scheduled for tonight, and I have respect for those speakers as well. I wanted to keep us moving along. But if we have time at the end of the meeting, we can continue the discussion, but this is listed as a presentation.
Well, I think we should have time for more questions if there are some, but I'll get mine out quickly. I was just wondering if one of y'all, maybe James or Tiger, could clarify about First Followers. I forgot to mention in the introduction too, kind of your original work, which was community entry after being impacted by the system and maybe even violence on the other end, and that there's kind of that two-sided coin of harm and the challenges that people face with re-entry. So I just didn't know if you could touch on that a little bit, kind of your original purpose for your foundation.
Go ahead, James.
Yes, thanks, Grace. Yes, we began, and we still are, a re-entry program, addressing the needs that people have when they come home from prison. But even before we had this epidemic of, of gun violence, we could see that the problems that people were bringing to us were complicated. Someone would walk through the door and say, "I need a job." And we would sit with them and we would talk about jobs, but pretty soon, we found out that they didn't just need a job. They probably needed housing. They probably needed an ID. There, most people coming home from prison need some kind of mental health treatment because prison itself is a traumatic experience. So we began to think about how we could expand our services in order to be able to address holistically the problems that people coming home from prison were facing. Then when we, you know, then when, when, when we began to have a bigger problem of violence, people in our organization, most of whom have been in prison, have been involved in violence of various forms, can see that they, they have something to offer in terms of trying to connect with people who have that, who, who are going through those experiences at the moment. So we already began that kind of work. Then we started talking with other people in the community, like Josh, like CU Try, like Courage Connection and so forth, and trying to get some kind of ideas about how we might make this bigger and build a bigger kind of collaboration.
Thank you. Any other, Sharice?
Yeah, there's a few questions that I have. I'm, I'm familiar with Josh Payne. I've worked with him before. And I'm also familiar with First Followers. And are you guys still meeting at Bethel Church or no?
No, we got the new drop incident, which is 314 Cottage Court. It's right be, it's right off of Springfield in between State and Randolph.
Okay, so is that where you envision having the one-stop shop place?
No, no, no. One-stop shop place would be totally something separate because although, you know, First Followers right now leading this, we want all organizations to be involved. We're thinking of a building.
How many organizations do you anticipate being in the one-stop shop?
Well, I can tell you now how many services we would like to see. We got five areas, far as counseling, outreach. Yeah, so the wraparound, so we would like to have at least about five to six different other providers in that one-stop shop with us.
So, okay, so I'm just, I'm just trying to get an idea of how, how you envision the organization of something, because this is a huge, a huge thing that you're talking about trying to take on, number one. Number two, how, how, how do you see that?
I'd like to clarify a little bit, Sharice, that I think this was kind of like an initial general conversation about community well-being and gun violence and First Followers. And, you know, they will be submitting an official proposal with their ideas. So that's kind of not exactly what this is right here.
Yeah, I was just, yeah, but I'm, I'm just thinking in terms of, you know, they're asking for, for a particular, like, organization or something. So that's what I, that's why I was asking the questions that I'm asking, is because I wanted to, to have a better idea of what their vision is and how they think that they might be able to organize such an endeavor.
Yeah, I think, I think, I think Grace's point is well-taken, and they will be, I'm sure, submitting a proposal, and all that can be provided in, in detail. Okay. I see Phyllis Clark. Is your hand up?
No, ma'am, it certainly is not.
Okay, there's a little hand on your screen, so I'm not sure where that's from.
Okay, no.
Well, at this point, I would like to say thank you for the presentation. This is one of those long-term approaches to this emergency that we're facing. I did want to clarify one thing. James, you, you said we had 80 killings, that the police chief reported 80 shootings. We actually had six deaths as of last Monday. But you were correct, during our council meeting last week, there was tragically another accidental shooting, which resulted in the loss of another life. But, but it wasn't 80 deaths. It was 80, approximately 80 shootings. Just want to make sure people knew that. Okay, thank you very much, and I know we'll hear a lot more from you. And I appreciate that. We will now move on to the second presentation, which is from the Regional Planning Commission. And with us, we have Lisa Benson and Dr. Delitzo, Director of the Regional Planning Commission.
I'm sorry, did you call on me, Mayor?
Yes, we did. Hi, Lisa.
Thank you. I was joining as a pan, or as a panelist. I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen if I can figure. I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen if I can figure out the correct screen to share. I think it is this one. Okay, can you see my screen?
Yes. And I, and I will say by a little bit more of introduction, um, I asked Lisa to present tonight after we heard her update at the last Regional Planning Commission Board Meeting. It was just impressive as far as the amount of services available at RPC, plus the amount of assistance that is available to individuals experiencing, um, challenges paying rent due to COVID and other, and other situations. So, um, I asked her to to share this information with the City Council, and she recently did so at the County Board as well. So that's where we are. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to share this information. We have been doing a great deal of assistance. Um, there are a number of entities throughout the community. They're also providing assistance, and we are working collaboratively with them. So I'll jump right in. So we have been receiving, um, various types of assistance. But the largest amount of assistance that we're administering currently is from the Department of Treasury. And, um, this is to assist, um, those that have been impacted by the pandemic. So I'm gonna go over various pieces of information and then some data points at this point. Um, eligible households. So the households that are eligible for the assistance have to have been impacted, um, by COVID. So that would be a reduction in household income or incurred significant costs or experienced other financial hardship either directly or indirectly as a result of the COVID outbreak. They also must, um, demonstrate a risk of experiencing homelessness or housing instability. And they must also, um, have an income, a household income at eighty percent of the annual area median income. And I'll give a slide that gives the specifics related to those income qualifications. So in probably late January, they announced this opportunity for funding. And this was a nationwide funding opportunity. And Champaign County was fortunate to have the ability to administer funds directly as a county recipient. Um, not all counties were able to do that. You had to have a population of two hundred thousand or more. And not all counties actually took on this, um, opportunity. So there is a statewide program administered by the Illinois Housing Development Authority, IDA. And that statewide program exists, and our county could have been assisted through that statewide opportunity. But locally, we gathered with a number of rent assistance providers and providers in the community and decided that we really wanted to fashion a program specific to our residents in Champaign County and be able to serve them locally. So in February of twenty twenty-one, we launched the program. I would say that we were one of the very earlier, early, um, programs that began to provide assistance. Um, I would say in Illinois, we might have been the first, and again, a number of programs started much later. So in February of twenty twenty-one, we launched our first, I call these iterations, the first iteration of this program. And what we did is we had a call center where individuals could call and schedule an appointment. And they, those appointments booked up probably in the first, I would say, two to three weeks. And so we, through February of twenty twenty-one through June, completed all of the, um, appointments that were scheduled and, um, began to provide assistance. Because it, it was a process. They had to do an in-person, and then we had to get information from landlords and then, um, determine their level of assistance. During that time, we also did a landlord partnership where we worked directly with landlords to submit referrals. We heard from landlords that they were having, um, they were experiencing that some of their tenants weren't applying for assistance, and we wanted to be able to assist them also directly. So we allowed them to make, um, direct referrals, and that was in May of twenty twenty-one. They could make referrals to us, and then we would reach out to the tenants to try to assist them to get these applications completed. We also did a landlord per, uh, partnership. There were some landlords that wanted to directly assist their tenants in completing these applications. And so I met with a group of landlords and provided training, if you will, on the application process, and, and they were able to work directly with their app, or their tenants and provide applications. So through that, we learned, we learned some things and found some ways to maybe improve the process. What we found during that first iteration is there was a lot of back and forth with getting documentation, and it, it took a great deal of, um, staff time and then frustration for landlords and tenants. So we launched a new iteration as of July of twenty twenty-one where there's applications available. They do an initial application, provide all their supporting documents. Once that's all complete and we have a complete application, we then schedule the in-person appointment. They come in for their appointment and, and things are pretty much buttoned up at that point, as long as they're eligible. So those are the iterations, and that's currently what we are doing. We are still accepting applications, and we can, we intend to continue to accept applications until our funds are exhausted. Or they tell us we can't anymore. So, um, funding, we have what we, two pots of funds. Essentially, there's ERA one and ERA two. So the ERA one is our first allocation of funding that we received for Champaign County. And you'll see on this slide that we had a total of six million two hundred and fifteen thousand, six hundred and twenty-three dollars awarded to Champaign County. I'm gonna do roundabouts. I'm not gonna do the exact numbers because it takes time. Um, nearly five point six million of that was direct assistance, as you see here on this slide. And then we received, um, six hundred and twenty-one thousand to administer the program. That's staffing, marketing, advertising, supplies, the computers that it takes for the staff to do the work, all that. Um, we have received a hundred percent of those funds. Um, we have that at the RPC ready to go out. That funding is available through September thirtieth of twenty twenty-two. So then there was another rescue plan that was approved through legislation, and that was enacted, as you see above here, um, on March eleventh, twenty twenty-one. That's referred to as ERA two. That then awarded us an additional seven point eight million dollars. Of that, six point six million, a little more than that, is direct assistance. At this point, we have only received forty percent of those funds. And that performance period will end September thirtieth of twenty twenty-five. You'll see here in a later slide that we have not even begun to administer those, um, ERA two. We're gonna exhaust our ERA one, and then we'll start spending on the ERA two. So on this slide, you see, um, this is data through September thirteenth of two thousand twenty-one. This is our ERA one funding. And at this point, we have spent a total of a little over four point two million dollars of the ERA funds for the direct assistance. Recall, we had nearly about five point six million. Of those funds, eighty-two percent of those has gone, of that funding has gone to rent assistance and about eighteen percent to utility or rearage. That is one of the benefits of having a locally administered program. We could fashion this program, again, um, based on the needs of, of our residents here in Champaign County. A lot of the programs are not providing direct utility assistance. We do that at the Regional Planning Commission all the time, and so we already had systems and infrastructure set up. And we decided we would do that. As you can see, it's definitely having impact, being able to provide utility assistance also. ERA two, again, through September thirtieth. At this point, we have not spent any of that funding. So now I'm gonna go over some statistics and data. We do lots of data collection at the Regional Planning Commission, and I think it's meaningful to kind of highlight who's being assisted and in what ways. So on this slide, we have, um, put a pictorial out about the amount of assistance in which cities and towns. So forty-five percent of the assistance, um, direct assistance funds has been provided to residents in Champaign. Thirty-seven percent in Urbana, fourteen percent in Rantoul. And then one percent of the individuals served are from Mohamed Savoy, Thomasborough, and Toledo. Each have one percent representation. On the right-hand side, you will see, um, the service cost by zip code. So this again is direct assistance. And with regard to Urbana specifically, um, one million five hundred and ninety-three thousand, four hundred and forty-eight dollars has been, um, provided in assistance specifically to those in Urbana. Those in the, in zip code six one eight zero one, seven hundred and fifty-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two, and six one eight zero two, eight hundred and three, uh, eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand, six hundred and ninety-six dollars. Household characteristics. About half of the individuals that we have seen, um, to date, or well, through September thirteenth, excuse me, are single individuals. And then thirty-seven percent are single-parent female households. And then you can see the other representations, some small numbers related to two adults, no children, four percent are two-parent households. And at the end, you guys can ask me to go back to some of these slides if you have additional information that you'd like to hear about. Household characteristics for age of the household members. Over half of them are ages twenty-five to forty-four. Twenty percent are eighteen to twenty-four. We often call that a transition age youth. And we have twelve percent over the age of fifty-five. With regard to race, seventy-five percent of the individuals that we've assisted are black or African-American. Sixteen percent are white. Four percent identify as multiracial. And then one percent are Asian-American Indian or Alaskan Native, and then four percent have indicated an other. We, um, we separate ethnicity and race. So third, three point five percent of the individuals that we have assisted identify as Hispanic ethnicity.
Lisa, I, we've reached the ten-minute level. I would ask if the council's interested in extending for another ten minutes. We'll need a motion.
I'll move that we extend for another ten minutes. A second.
Okay, could, could the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you, Lisa. Go ahead.
No problem. This is the last slide. Sorry about that. So this is household characteristics, and this actually shows, um, annual household income levels. So, um, the, the far left-hand side of, side of this slide shows that eighty-nine percent of the households actually fall at, um, fifty percent of the federal poverty level or lower. For a three-person household, that means that the total household income annually was just slightly under eleven thousand dollars. Keep in mind, this is the, um, annual income for these households at the time of application, and it also reflected oftentimes their twenty-twenty, um, annual tax return. So this is a reflection of the households that we've reserved and that we, that we have assisted and, um, depicts their income during the pandemic, in essence. So. And I will end there and take any questions that anyone may have.
Any questions for Lisa, Mary Alice, and then Grace?
Um, roughly from the start, I know that you said that in July you changed kind of the strategy in terms of how you did this by mental initial application, then coming in person. Roughly, how long does it take from, uh, the start until disbursement for somebody to receive funds?
So at this point in time, um, once an individual submits a full application and it's a complete application, usually within twenty-four hours that application is reviewed. They're sometimes then called same day. Usually within forty-eight hours, they're contacted to schedule an appointment. At this point, we are able to offer same-day appointments. And we're not booked out. We have enough staff. So usually people, if their schedules are open and they're able to, they're in for their appointment, usually within forty-eight hours again. They complete that application or the in-person appointment, which takes, um, maybe ten, fifteen minutes at most. And then we have everything that we need except for a landlord agreement. So we contact the landlords and ask them to, waive late fees, any late fees. We also ask that they, um, not evict for about anywhere from thirty to ninety days. It depends on what time. So right now, when somebody comes for an application, we're asking landlords to sign the landlord agreement that says they won't move for any eviction through December thirty, December of twenty twenty-one. Um, from that point, then we, um, process payment. And processing payment can take anywhere from fourteen to thirty days. But the landlords, again, that we work with, we have great relationships with the landlords. They know the payments are coming and they're um, working very collaboratively with us.
Okay, and if somebody, um, I mean, the pandemic is ebbs and flows, right? So, I mean, we've been going through different stages of lockdown and so forth. So somebody might have been affected at the beginning of the pandemic, went back into the workforce, and then, and then also be, you know, laid off, um, at now or in the future. How does that work? Can somebody come back and say, "Okay, well, now I need assistance a second time"?
Yes, um, we've actually allowed people to come back, um, three times. So during the first iteration, um, they may have been assisted once. And then we've had people that have come back one, one or two, even three times since we started in July. We have put a limit on the number of times because it's not a monthly comeback for assistance type of program. Um, but if they indeed have been impacted, and it does have a maximum number of months that we can provide and a maximum amount of assistance. At this point, the maximum amount of assistance is twenty thousand dollars.
Thank you.
Sure.
Grace, did you have a question?
Yes, thank you. Um, thanks for the presentation, and I'm glad to see that there's some funds available. Um, I was wondering to, so is that right, that almost all of the funds are distributed already?
No, 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 ma'am. Um, we actually, I'm gonna go back to that slide. If you note here, we have indirect assistance, five point, so the five point five nine four million. And this next slide shows that we've, as of September thirtieth, only dispersed a little over four point two million. So in the first ERA one funds, we still have remaining direct assistance. And then we have millions of dollars of assistance still available to assist through the ERA two.
Okay, cool. Thank you for clarifying. And I was wondering how this works, um, with people who may be getting or applying for assistance through the townships?
The townships, um, do, they're not administering any of the Department of Treasury funding. Um, so we sorry, my son just walked in and confused me here. So, um, townships are not receiving any Department of Treasury funding, so we are able to provide assistance irrelevant of their assist, their, their funding assistance. However, what we do at the Regional Planning Commission is we do get a rent ledger, so we're not duplicating, um, assistance. So if they've already had a month paid, then naturally we wouldn't pay it. We're only paying past due rent assistance.
Okay, but communicating on that if someone's getting assistance somewhere else and it doesn't make them ineligible?
That is absolutely true. So we definitely want people, if they're behind, to apply, and we will do what we can to assist where they haven't been able to be assisted.
Thank you.
Again, one other clarification that I will say about that is, um, the assistance that we provide starts with April twenty twenty to current. So anything that pre, predated the pandemic, we're not able to provide assistance for those, those months.
Thank you.
Sure.
Grace?
Yeah, um, when, in paying, um, the past due rental assistance, are you, are you giving the funds to the, the, the tenant or the funds to the landlord?
Um, the payments go to landlords. In the event we have a landlord that I'm gonna use the word that the federal government references is uncooperative. Uh, maybe they, they just say, "We're not going to do this." Um, once we document efforts to try to work directly with the landlord and provide the payment to the landlord, um, we can issue payment directly to tenants. We've done that in less than ten cases at this point. Um, and what we do is we ask that they, um, sign an agreement to indeed make Um, and what we do is we ask that they sign an agreement to indeed make payment to the landlord for the rent or utility of, of rearrange.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
I think we have time for one more question. Uh, Grace? Grace?
Sorry, thanks. Yeah, no one else had one. I had another quick one. If you could just reiterate, um, the like web address or phone number, or how people get ahold of this, and if we could put that on um, some city information?
Absolutely. So, um, the applications are actually available at the Urbana Library. They are also at the Champaign Library. They're available at the Regional Planning Commission in Urbana. And we have them posted on our website at www.ccrpc.org backslash ERA. So on the website, is on our landing page, there's a link and the application is listed on our, um, website.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you very much, Lisa.
Thank you.
All right, our final presentation tonight is from our staff member Sheila Dodd. She'll be doing, um, an update on, uh, housing in Urbana and then the year-end CAPER report, so this will be probably longer than ten minutes, but, um, but as a staff report, that, that's fine. So go ahead, Sheila.
Thank you. Um, tonight I'm gonna give an overview of our consolidated annual performance evaluation report. For our newer council members, um, every five years, the city writes a consolidated plan that does extensive research on what the housing needs are. We work with Regional Plan Commission, Champaign Township, social service agencies to just identify any issues or needs that are out there. This, uh, plan was adopted for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-four, and this is our first year of, um, addressing those needs that were identified. Next slide, please. Um, this year for funding, we got five hundred and one thousand four hundred and fifteen dollars in CDBG, eight hundred and twenty-two thousand in home, um, additional six hundred and twenty-nine thousand in COVID funding. And then we applied through the state of Illinois and received, um, three hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars in emergency solutions grants. So there was a lot of money that came just to the city of Urbana to help address some of these issues. So some of our challenges were obviously COVID. One of our main programs that we have always offered is, uh, minor home repairs, um, repairs to seniors uh, who just need, you know, maybe a storm door or just small, under, under a thousand dollar repairs. We also offered accessibility grants to make, um, it easier for someone with a disability to continue to stay in their home. Uh, with COVID, as people would call, we would ask, you know, with COVID, in order to keep you safe and our staff safe, does this have to be done right away? And many said no, and we just kept a list. Some obviously could not. If somebody's furnace was out, or there was a sewer backup, or they needed a ramp so, you know, they could go home and, and, uh, be comfortable in their own home, those we did address. So this year we, um, completed six homeowner rehab projects. And then in the spring of this year, um, April, Mayish, we took that list and reached out to everybody and said, you know, we feel like enough people are vaccinated, we're in a little bit safer environment, and do you still need assistance? And so we've reached back out to them and are moving forward with those, uh, projects. Um, the additional funding that we received from HUD, uh, required quite a bit of administrative, uh, work. We had to, uh, attend many sessions with HUD and identifying what the rules and regulations of the funding were. We met with, um, many area service providers, Champaign, Urbana, the Townships, Rantool, uh, Danville, just to kind of see what everybody else was doing and, and help each other with our programs. Um, and we took to council in June, um, to our, our program manual. So we identified three needs, uh, assistance with housing. So our program could offer three months of rent assistance for those who were, um, current on their rent as of April first of twenty twenty. And then we also were able to offer assistance to small businesses. Um, we targeted ours to smaller minority women-owned businesses, and we were able to assist twenty-seven businesses. And then finally, this tenant-based rental assistance, um, program, and we did fund not through the COVID money, but through our home program. We funded a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for Champaign County to be able, um, to provide assistance. We gave money to, um, first followers because their program is unique, and many of their clients kind of fell through the gaps of where other people could help them. So we, uh, were able to provide them with assistance to help people who were coming out of incarceration uh, to be able to get, uh, job training and job skills and, uh, telephone so they could, you know, answer calls for interviews and that type of a thing. We also provided, uh, funding to Champaign County healthcare consumers. They, um, were able to help, again, like kind of a unique group is medically fragile people came out of the hospital, they needed to be quarantined. They couldn't go back to their regular living facilities, or if they were homeless, they couldn't go to the shelter because the shelter was, um, shut down or not safe at that point. And so they, um, put people up into, uh, hotels and, you know, during that time period to keep them safe. And then finally, our emergency solutions grant funding. Um, it is moving forward with Cunningham Township, and we've talked about this recently. They're providing a rapid rehousing program, and then CU at Home received a portion of the funding for operating expenses for the shelter. So our consolidated social service funding last year, um, between the Cunningham Township, City of Champaign General Fund, and CDBG, uh, we had about two hundred thousand dollars, uh, that we gave, um, allocated to social service agencies throughout the community. Um, of that money, a total of nine hundred and eighty-six Urbana residents received services. Um, as part of this funding, we do have people report to us quarterly on who they're serving so that we can make sure that Urbana's funds go to assist Urbana residents. Um, we did provide rent assistance to thirty-three families. And then once the funding came to the county, uh, because their funding is time stamped, but it also was a much better program than we could offer. Uh, we could only offer three months assistance, and at that point, we knew many people needed a lot longer than that. We referred, uh, over a hundred families to the Champaign County Emergency Rental Assistance Program. We added two affordable housing units with Habitat for Humanity. Uh, typically, they, um, were building two to five houses a year. But with COVID, uh, restrictions on volunteers and their ability to get supplies now and uh, variety of things, it just really reduced the amount of, uh, work that they were able to do, but I'm happy that they, they were able to do the two. And then some of these projects were in place before the pandemic, so we finished them out. Uh, we did a CIP project, uh, doing Kent Street lighting. We provided streetlights along, uh, Kent Street. Dr. Ellis subdivision, we did curb cut improvements. Um, we worked with the Housing Authority on the Pine Place, uh, Pinewood Place development. And then through our regular programs, um, fifty-three families were served with tenant-based rental assistance. Next slide, please. But these are some of the statistics that we found during our research for the consolidated plan. Um, the housing and rent burden, forty-seven percent of renters in Champaign County are rent burdened. And I would say any changes in that number is just a, a larger increase. Uh, to afford rent on a two-bedroom home in Champaign, residents must, actually at Champaign County, residents must make sixteen dollars an hour, um, at forty hours a week. And during the pandemic, we know many weren't doing that at all. Some concerns we have with the state eviction moratorium ends October third. Um, the city does currently have three transitional housing units. And so I'm happy to say that two of those, um, have signed leases. One moved in, um, the beginning of September. The other one is going to move in this week. And then we're working with the Regional Plan Commission on the third home, and, um, hopefully there will be somebody in there before the end of the year. And then another need that we continue to see is the tenant-based rental assistance. Um, it's been provided by a variety of agencies over the last several years. Um, Courage Connection group did a program, Rosecrans did a program, and the county this past year did two. They, they did their normal, uh, program, and then they also did one for those impacted by COVID. Uh, so after this year, Rosecrans and, um, Courage Connection are no longer going to be doing the, the program, and it'll just be, uh, the county that, that offers the tenant-based rental assistance, which they do receive home funding to, um, implement those programs. Next slide, please. We also know that homelessness is, is a, uh, big issue this year, especially with, uh, CU at Home making some changes to their program. Uh, they're currently with their reopening and their new program guidelines. Um, they do not offer a low-barrier year-round, um, shelter services anymore, and that's desperately needed. Uh, there's public infrastructure needs, uh, some neighborhoods still lack, um, adequate lighting. There's walkability issues, drainage issues, safety issues. And then, um, programs for our youth. This past year, twenty-one, twenty-two, uh, Cunningham Township separated their funds from this consolidated funding and targeted their funding towards programs that really expanded their services. And so with doing that, um, we met with an internal group, um, that had worked on the social service programs in the past, uh, which is Mary Alice Wu, myself, uh, my staff. And then we've, um, invited Lamont Peppers to the group because he has a lot of experience working with the youth. And we're gonna, um, reach out to agencies and ask them to, uh, identify programs that, that can assist our youth, anywhere from, you know, mentoring or, uh, after-school programs, what, whatever that is. Um, we'll ask them to apply, and then we'll score them on a rubric and bring forth their, uh, applications for funding. Um, hopefully before the end of this, this year. We're a little delayed in getting that done. And then finally, we, we are launching two programs I'm very excited about, starting on Monday. Um, we're offering an Ameren Energy Efficiency Program. We've been working with Ameren since the first of the year. They currently offer a energy efficiency program, uh, to residents throughout the state of Illinois. Um, we, but they have limitations, so they offer to very low, like zero to fifty percent median family income. Um, a hundred percent assistance, no co-pay. But people who are fifty-one to eighty percent, there's a co-pay requirement. And so we will be offering, um, to pay that co-pay for that little bit higher income group. Um, we also, some of the services they don't provide, such as, uh, air conditioning, we feel like is an important service that we already do for seniors or persons with disabilities, um, that we would like to continue doing that. And if we can do it in partnership with this program, it saves us staffing costs and, and, uh, seems to be a more efficient way of running the program. We're also gonna be offering down payment assistance. We've been working with local lenders, uh, the past six months to, um, identify where there's a need and a gap. We funded this in our, um, twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year, and we, uh, have vetted all of our ideas and and got HUD approval, and we'll be launching that assistance, uh, starting on Monday as well. And then the youth services, um, request for proposals. Um, we anticipate launching in October and, uh, hope to have those funding and contracts brought, brought back to you. Um, like I said, before the end of the year. So that's a quick overview of where we're at in this first year of funding, um, of this consolidated plan. Does anybody have any questions?
Charisse?
Hi, Sheila. Um, I, I have a few questions. Um, cause you just kinda, um, said a little bit of something about youth programs. Could, could you be more specific? Um, I guess what I wanna know, my question is, do we have any kind of enumerated list of how many youth programs are programs for at-risk kids or, um, um, underserved kids or whatever? Do we have a, a list of how many there, there are, that are available in the Champaign-Urbana area?
We do have a list of existing programs that are being offered throughout Champaign County, um, that I can share with you. Um, but, you know, part of the reason of doing that is as this smaller group needs, we wanna make sure we don't duplicate services, and we also wanna make sure that we target the programs, any programs we fund, to Urbana residents.
Okay, are all these programs that you, you said you have a list of, are all, are all of these programs, um, uh, getting some kind of funds from Urbana, or do you have fun, or you just have a list?
No, we just have a list. We, we have not funded any social service agencies this fiscal year.
That, that, that's what I'd like to see, uh, if possible. Also, um, with the Ameren Energy Efficiency Program, what is that, what does that mean exactly? Is that like, um, uh, uh, assistance with your, with your current, um, bill, or is it something like Ameren will give you so much money to get a more efficient refrigerator or something?
It's actually to the, to the home. So if you need additional insulation, if you need your windows caulked, um, they come in, Ameren will come in and do an evaluation of what the needs are to bring the house, um, up to more energy efficiency, uh, standards. And then from that, they make the list of repairs, they do the screening of the, um, clients, and then we partner with them on paying the contractor directly and doing the reporting back to HUD that we have to do.
Okay, um, regarding the, um, youth services that you were talking about. Uh huh. Uh, what, what does that entail? What does that mean?
Um, it, it's just a gamut. We, we feel like that there's, that's been kind of a big issue between crime, um, students, you know, falling behind due to the, the pandemic. Um, there's a lot of areas where I think our youth need help. But I don't wanna be the end-all, know-all, so we're just gonna put out a request for proposals and ask that agencies submit to us what, where they see the gap is or what services they offer. And then, um, this internal team will look at, look at the applications, score them, and then, like I said, um, bring them back to the council for approval.
Okay, so is that something like we, we are partnered with a particular, uh, group or social?
Not at this time. I mean, it may end up that we are, but, but right now, we're just open to the community, uh, because like I said, there, there may be a need out there that staff is just not aware of, and so I felt it was better to just have an open process for people to come to us with their ideas.
Okay, all right, thank you. So, Shandra?
Hi, Sheila, thanks for this information. Um, you mentioned three needs, youth services, homelessness, and what was the third one?
Um, housing assistance.
Housing assistance, okay, so, um, you've mentioned, uh, solutions around youth services. What about for homelessness? Have, um, what are sort of like your, your plan to address that need, if there is any at the moment?
Right. The, the city of Urbana is acting as the, uh, sub-recipient of the emergency solutions grant funding. While it's not a part of this report, it is an important service that we're offering to the community. Um, Cunningham Township and CU at Home, um, didn't meet the state of Illinois's requirements to, um, administer the grant themselves. And so we applied on their behalf and are helping them administer their programs. So we're just doing the homelessness in partnership with Township and CU at Home.
Okay, is there any plans for, you know, Urbana to do something on its own, or, or, you know, it, uh, something else?
Yeah, not at this time, however, um, we received two point nine million dollars in entitlement uh, through the first Biden, um, drop in March. However, HUD has asked us to be thoughtful and careful and write a thorough plan before we implement anything. So we had our first training today on it. There's going to be four of them that just walks through what's eligible, you know, what are best practices? And then, once we have that training, it's through the home funding, so it'll be available countywide. We'll meet with our other partners, Champaign, Champaign County Regional Plan Commission, and then both townships, because they obviously touch, you know, a lot of the same people that we do, to just see what their, what the unmet needs are, where we can go with this funding. We have until twenty twenty five to spend it. And so we're just learning about it and we'll be taking our time. And once a final plan is approved, you know, we'll obviously take it back to you because we'll have to amend our consolidated plan in order to add the funding in. So that pot of money, because it's home money, would be a use for some type of maybe SRO, a single room occupancy, or, you know, some type of services to the homeless. I don't have any thoughts or in mind of what that may be, but that is a pot of money that could be used for that. And once we identify those needs with other partners, like I said, we'll we'll be meeting with them and and identifying where we can bring step back to you.
Okay, um, I I know the the needs have been well identified, so hopefully that's a a pretty easy, quick step and you guys can get to implementing a program. And and lastly, the consolidated plan, is that available on the website? I see a link board, but it, I was on, when I clicked on it, it was only like three pages is is that?
No, it's like three hundred pages. So I will, I will check and make sure that's correct and if, and make sure the right one is up there.
Okay, thank you.
Chris.
Yeah, Sheila, could you tell me the Pinewood place where I believe twenty four homeless people waiting for social security, has that been filled yet?
You know, I'm not sure Cunningham Township is managing the property. They they recently, like July-ish, did a ribbon cutting and opened it up. And so I would have to check with Township to see where they're at with the capacity.
Actually, actually, housing authorities managing the property. Cunningham Township refers people to it, but.
Okay, thank you.
Managers, yeah.
So I'm not sure, Chris, I can find out the answer and get back to you.
Grace.
Thank you. Thanks again for the presentation and doing this important work. I did find the report on your website or on our website. It's just its own page there, Shandra, anyone else, Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. That's the best I can go. I found it just like Googling. But I do see the draft there. And I was going to ask, you know, if this was, if we were going to see this again or there's any kind of approval or input, or it's just kind of an update. And then I was also wondering if there was any community input over the past month that it's been available for input.
No, there hasn't been any community input. We received an email from somebody who had attended the public hearing for the twenty two, twenty three annual action plan. And they had some questions about the layout of the caper because many of the numbers in the draft caper are listed at zero. But that is just an issue with the HUD's reporting system. And so, you know, once we explain that technical issues, but there really wasn't any substance questions. We launched it August seventeenth, I believe, and we, I will be mailing it to HUD in the morning.
Is there typically, like, is that, I mean, I guess you kind of solicited public input? Or is there, I guess I'm just wondering if there's any openness for council or public input? Or this is just kind of an update of your plan?
Yeah, no, it's just really a reporting on what we did. And so it pulls a lot of numbers from HUD has an electronic system, IDIS, Integrated Dispersment Information System. And so when we, for example, we approve somebody for a housing rehab project, we enter their information into that system. And then when we spend money and we draw the funds, that also happens through that system. And so, you know, HUD gathers a lot of that information just through our normal day-to-day process. And so what we really are, you know, doing is answering any questions that that data collection answers. And then, you know, like I said, if there's anything that we didn't do. So for example, this year with the housing rehab, with COVID being a challenge, we address that in our narratives.
And so is this, sorry, one more, is this, is this the end of the year then, or does it go through?
It goes through July one through June thirty, and it's twenty twenty one.
Okay, and you said that some of these numbers are not accurate that have zeros?
Yeah, there was a problem with the HUD software that we got resolved last week. And so we have updated numbers and I can provide you a link. Actually, the final product also will be on the website that will have those updated numbers in it.
Thank you, yeah, that'll be good.
We have time for one more question, if anyone has a question. Okay, I don't see any hands. Thank you very much, Sheila.
Welcome.
And Braden, I'm sure he had a lot to do with this too. We'll move on to public input. If you'd like to address the council, please raise your hand. We'll start with Linda Turnbull. You have four minutes. It looks like we have Evelyn, Dr. Underwood. Okay, go ahead, Dr. Underwood.
Okay, you said, did I unmute myself?
You did.
Okay, I'm on my iPad tonight, so apparently y'all saw my hand. Thank you. Last week I had a lot, but apparently nobody saw my hand. I didn't know I would be called on, so I didn't have last week all the information, all the things that I was going to talk about in hand. But let me just say this. I I've heard the pretty words from the Regional Planning Commission. I've heard the pretty words from Ms. Dodd. You know, pretty words are one thing, but what are we doing? Now, I'm not able to hear and do as much as I've done in the past as relates to research and all. But what I'm hearing, it goes pretty words from a regional planning again. Remember, they had that money before, the millions of dollars they got a few years back. The same problem, because I got a copy of that and I saw it and I saw what they were doing. And it relates to the community that is problematic. And I hear the pretty words again this time, but what I'm hearing, a lot of people are not getting those monies. And I know for a fact that landlords, they had just a few weeks up there for landlords to apply for their people. And then cut it out. Why would you do that? When the landlords, a lot of the time, they don't have the fear that other people have that, oh, if I go in and get that money, they might take my kids, other things that have been happening to people. And, oh, I didn't cross a I dot a T, then I can't get it, they're going to throw my information away. It's a mess. Again, a mess. I just wish I was able to do the research, but God gonna send me somebody to help me. It's a mess. And with that, and Ms. Dodd can tell you, when they had those hearings, who was there? One hearing, they had big hearing, one person was there, and that was Evelyn Underwood, Dr. Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood. They, I don't know what they're doing, but they're not getting the people. Now, I know she and her counterpart in Champaign came to the Minnesota Lions, but everything was almost done when they came. It's not supposed to be like that. Real input is supposed to be gotten from the public. I could go on and on, but I don't want to be so negative. But the only thing I can do is tell the truth. We need truth. Truth is what we need. And I hope that the city council people will do that research too, to see what's going on. Especially, well, I'm not going to say, well, especially the person from our area. Now, also, I I talked months ago about about the city of Bloomington, a norma, the city of Springfield having, having interrupters. Nobody looked into that. But all of a sudden, when you hear from Eisenhower, it ran to, everybody's looking into that. But sometimes people have ideas. When I talked, talked to that other time, it's been three months ago, I had talked to a person who had been on the council, who knows his stuff, and gave me the information that if they use those interrupters, they could tell when a gunshot shot went off and seconds after that, they could get to that. I don't know if anybody looked into that. If they did, I didn't hear about it and I didn't hear anything about it. Additionally.
Dr. Underwood, your time is up. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, Linda Turnbull.
Okay, now can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Linda.
Hey, I'm glad I got through here because I've been on here a long time, hour and a half, I believe. And I've been listening to everybody input. I'm gonna go pretty fast. I'm Linda Turnbull. I'm pretty sure everybody knows me. I've registered over five thousand people to vote and I worked with youths and kids for over thirty years in program. And they've been very positive and successful programs. What I'm hearing is about gun violence. My family members have been impacted by gun violence. And gun violence in our city has grown to be very, very bad. Hallelujah, we need emergency, we need to address this in emergency quickly and fast. I'm not saying that programs won't work, but it's programs take a while. We need to address gun violence right away. I live in a neighborhood that a house, whole house was shot up and person was killed inside of it, two different houses. I cannot sleep by my door at nighttime. Hallelujah, I feel uncomfortable. I did get a lot of people to sign the petitions for cameras, but it was a different type of camera. Right now, I don't care what kind of camera it is, long as it's a camera where it can help aid us to solve some of this crime off to the streets. And the one I'm looking at now is the one that reads the license plates. That camera has been very successful and ran too because they helped kept somebody that had an incident happen with gun violence here. And what the, with camera reading and the license plates, they can share information with different cities, that way we can address this issue and get these people off the streets. I mean, you know, it takes a village to solve this stuff, ain't just one thing we need to do. But right away, we need to install those cameras because cameras will help solve gun violence, I believe, hallelujah. And the reason why I believe that is because we are not doing anything else but talking and programs, and that stuff takes a while. We need something right now, right now, we need this, hallelujah. Again, if you lived in a neighborhood and around the corner, if a whole house was shot up, person was killed in it and stuff like that, you would be feeling the same way. And it's a lot, just not only that, it's many lives being taken by gun violence. And these cameras would help aid to the people being afraid to talk. It would read the license plates. If we would have that camera, when those houses get shot up, we would have got footage on who was in the neighborhood that night and who was these people that did that shooting. Hallelujah, we would got some of this stuff solved. And I really believe that you guys need to vote on getting those cameras. I really support that idea because we need something right away. We cannot just keep waiting and waiting and talking and talking and doing nothing. Again, I'm not saying programs don't work. It takes a while for them programs to work, hallelujah. And the programs that they had in the past did not work. I'm not saying a new program might not work. It will work, but it will take time for that. And by the time you get that going, some more lives will be gone. So right now, we need to get those cameras installed. I don't know how many times I gotta keep preaching to the choir, how many times I gotta keep talking, hallelujah. What I want to say is, get those cameras up, please, in Jesus's name, amen. I'm done.
Thank you, Linda. Next up is Frances Rigberg.
There, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Okay, I'm Fran Rigberg, Urbana resident since nineteen seventy seven, Ward seven. Apologies to those of you who have already seen some of this material. I speak as an individual Urbana resident tonight, not as a representative of the Urbana Human Relations Commission, which I chair, though I cannot promise that you won't hear from us since we're empowered to advise you when you've gone astray. I have recently become aware that due to a clause in the city's contract with the police union, no person with a felony conviction can serve on the CPRB. Presumably because members of the police department are city employees and so cannot serve on that board, this was seen as somehow leveling the playing field. But setting up this equivalence is fallacious, prejudiced, and discriminatory. Residents of Urbana with felony convictions have civil rights that no valid contract can abridge. This includes serving on a volunteer public body if appointed. The fact that they are being denied this right demonstrates to me that the city remains unclear on the fact and the reason that prior conviction is a protected class in our city. It can be argued that individuals who are irrationally hostile to the police, are biased or prejudiced against the police, are not desirable members of a board whose mission is to be objective about police behavior, and that's true. But the class of people with felony convictions is not identical to the set of people who cannot be fair or objective in evaluating police behavior any more than it is identical to the class of people dangerous to rent to or undesirable to hire. The cornerstone of the human rights ordinance is that individuals have the right to be judged individually, especially those who are members of classes who have been discriminated against unfairly in the past. Using felony conviction as a marker for the inability to be objective and honest about law enforcement is unfair, lazy, regressive, and yes, on its face, illegal in Urbana. Furthermore, there is no conclusive evidence that people with felony convictions are, and apparently uniquely are, being the only excluded civilians, irrationally hostile to law enforcement, as would be required to establish the lawful exclusion of this entire class from the board. It is an assumption based on a stereotype, the familiar basis of prejudices, and unlawful discrimination. I am shocked that the city failed to bear in mind the basics of the human rights ordinance and has agreed to engage in a discriminatory practice that enshrines antagonisms rather than seeking to heal them. Furthermore, in this time of disproportionate incarceration of black men, the de facto racism here cannot be overlooked. I might add that I also question excluding former police officers from the CPRB, who while not a protected class per se, are individuals who similarly deserve not to be stereotyped. We are one community and we should act that way, not assume the worst of each other. Thank you.
Thank you, Fran. Next up is Tracy Chan.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi.
Hi, I'm Tracy Chung. Um, tonight, I'm bringing your attention to efforts by Mayor Marlin, City Administrator Carol Mitten, and Urbana Police Leadership to suppress efforts by the Urbana Civilian Police Review Board to bring police misconduct to light. Last Wednesday, the Urbana Civilian Police Review Board, CPRB, had planned to review and discuss a Taser incident from February 6, 2019. This was the Taser incident that we've mentioned before, where Deputy Police, Deputy Police Chief Richard Souls had suppressed video footage that showed police misconduct. This is the third time that the CPRB has tried to review this Taser incident after the evidence suppressed by Deputy Chief Souls was produced. Um, and if you guys, council members, did not watch the CPRB meeting um, last Wednesday, September 22nd, uh, you really should. During this meeting, City Administrator Carol Mitten had one mission. That was to limit CPRB's authority and to ensure that misconduct by Urbana Police Department officers remain buried. On Wednesday, Carol Mitten told board members that they do not have the authority to vote if the Taser usage was proper or improper. She also told board members that their vote, where they determined that there was improper Taser usage during a review this past August was not valid. This was quite shocking, as the CPRB had always been taking votes about proper or improper Taser usage for all the past, for the past Taser reviews. For example, on July 24, 2019, the CPRB reviewed seven cases of Taser usages and discharges. The board voted that all these Taser usages, all seven cases, was acceptable. On January 22, 2020, the board also voted that the Taser case they reviewed was acceptable. So why did Carol Mitten and Urbana Police Department suddenly decide that the board's vote in April was invalid? The only reason and difference is that this is the very first time that the CPRB was doing something more than rubber stamping. They actually voted improper Taser usage. And why is Carol Mitten so adamant that the board does not vote on the February 6, 2019 Taser incident? That's because the new evidence showed misconduct. And Carol Mitten knows that it is very likely that there will be another vote of improper Taser usage. So this is just another attempt to squash public determination, um, a public determination and declaration of improper Taser usage. And UPD does not want this to happen. Also, during last Wednesday CPRB meeting, Lieutenant Cory Coker, who is the assigned UPD representative for Taser reviews, just did not show up for the review. And this is so disrespectful. And this review was planned well in advance, so there's no excuse for it. Meanwhile, when CPRB members voiced concern that they were left out of the police collective bargaining contract, um, Carol Mitten once again tried to calm their concerns by dishonestly presenting that some of the changes, presenting some of the changes in the contract as wins. Um, basically, just like how Mayor Marlin and the police department have lied to you guys, council members, and the public. And they continue to be dishonest and deceptive about the changes in the new contract. Take tonight, for example. Tonight's agenda says that you guys are amending the CPRB ordinance change to conform with the recently approved collecting, collective bargaining agreement wins. When, I hope you guys realize it by now, in reality, you guys are amending the ordinance to be in line with state law. Um, and the other claims such as, um, the other claim wins such as not prosecuting complaints, it just does not make sense. The city does not have authority to prosecute complainants. So again, a made up win. Um, what are you guys going to do about it? Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Alan Max Axelrod.
So I'm gonna preface my, uh, thank you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, please dot the clock. Okay, so I'm gonna preface my comments tonight by saying that the home across from me was shot up with over a dozen bullets two years ago and change. And the home that shares a driveway with me was robbed at gunpoint. So when we're talking about people who also happen to live near where there are shootings, using their experiences, there's always a counterbalance. And the other important aspect of this is that we know that, especially within lieu of the police vote, that you are likely to approve the cameras. And to say that there may not be anything else that you can do, here's something you can do. If you believe that you must respond to an emergency, then I suggest you pass a, an ordinance adopting a formula that when the city is in an enforcement emergency, then a proportion of the funds allocated goes to the long-term support and betterment of that community, so that we are not singularly spending things on situations that are going to compound harm due to policy failures, because that's where it comes from. So as you were noted to by first followers during the presentation, solidarity with Taiga, is that the increase in gun violence is nationwide. When we look at this, the ebbs and flows of the coronavirus pandemic, as one of the city older persons has mentioned, you should note that two weeks after utility shut-offs resumed in the fall 2020, we saw a huge increase in coronavirus cases before Halloween and before the election. In spring, when we saw these decreasing coronavirus caseloads amid the normalization of the Brazilian coronavirus strain, we saw it flatline. That was two weeks after the utility shut-off moratorium expired on April. And then it went back down after the Utility Disconnection Avoidance Program was enacted. The Illinois Department of Health noted to WILL, our local NPR affiliate, that in April, the Delta coronavirus strain was here. Let's reflect on the fact that not every positive test is tested for what variant it is. They are telling us that it was here in April. Yet it wasn't until July when the caseload started to increase. What happened? It was mid-July. It was two weeks after the cessation of the Utility Disconnection Avoidance Program. For those of you who call it a correlation, how many times do you have to see it to repeat before you can admit what's actually happening? I'm very pleased to see that so many households were helped with the Emergency Rent Assistance Program. However, let's put that in perspective. 1,400 and change households were assisted via the Emergency Rental Assistance Program in Champaign County. Meanwhile, over that same time period, 5,652 households in Champaign County were disconnected. That's not even counting the ones that still fell through the cracks and were evicted. And that is also not counting the ones who were disconnected this month, because we won't know about that for another month and a half. Let's also acknowledge that while Ameren Illinois has supportive programs, they also are completely unsupportive of our Public Health Department, which requested disconnection notices outside of the statutorily required time window. And they voluntarily said no, just like Illinois American Water. Do not give these people free PR just because they have good programs on some other fronts when they are killing our residents. The other thing that I also want to say is that the Ameren Down Payment Assistance Program was not Ameren Illinois's plan. Anybody who actually follows what our state regulatory body does would know that that was part of the reopen plan, where they alleged that they would have a slower rate of disconnections. We have had over 160,000 disconnections since April, as compared to 80,000 households disconnected last year. Lastly, I want to note that last week, we passed two more resolutions for no Ameren shut-offs in the Illinois student government again, and in the Peoria Democratic Party. So we do a lot more than talk for those who want to make such remarks. Have a good night.
Thank you. Next up is Reed. And I'll need help pronouncing your last name.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, yes, my name is Reed Nightsey. Uh, good evening, everyone. I am the co-director of the Women's March, taking place this Saturday, October 2nd, at 10:00 a.m. I'm here today to express the disappointment we felt with the city of Urbana's decision to deny our permits, particularly after learning that the reasons given for the denial were pretextual. Furthermore, the irony of the denial has not gone unnoticed. Men's interest, football, taking priority over women's. Now, I would prefer not to have to think about things like mass shootings and violence, but given the reality of our modern world, I have to. Marching is inherently political. Not everyone supports reproductive freedom. We do have serious opposition. Sorry, my dog. The seriousness is underscored by the violent history of the anti-choice movement, like, say, bombing abortion clinics or murdering abortion providers. We are not expecting anything to happen, but we have to be prepared for the possibility. To not take safety into consideration would be grossly negligent on our part. But having Urbana police officers monitoring the event and blocking off intersections is imperative for maintaining our attendee's safety. That is our biggest concern, safety. In light of the denial of our permits, we will do everything in our power to keep people on the sidewalks and keep them safe. We are expecting at least 1,000. But if we have the same response as the 2017 march, where 6,000 people attended, our ability to confine this march to sidewalks decreases. This is a grassroots movement. We are just lowly law students. We don't have the money or the bodies to ensure everyone's safety. We have created a safety team, and we will be receiving de-escalation training. However, just the mere presence of a uniformed officer carries the authority of the state. Their presence alone is a deterrent. This is an undeniable statistic. I think we can all agree that the football game this Saturday against an unranked team is not the biggest event of the year for the Athletics Department. In fact, an 11:00 a.m. game actually denotes its importance. But this March for Reproductive Freedom, taking place nationwide in all 50 states, may well be the biggest event for human rights in 2021. So I ask you, what is truly more important? What has the most social value? The denial of our permits tells us that the city of Urbana's answers to those questions. Regardless if that was not your intention, that was how it was received. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Next up is Julie Watkins.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi. I hope everyone is safe and continues to be safe. Um, on their surveillance tech issue, I want to repeat that the most safe neighborhoods have the most programs. And as other people have mentioned, that we have been getting community input in previous years, uh, asking that there is a problem getting worse. And I'm sorry that we're in a worse crisis now. Um, on the Urbana Police Contract, um, about the CPRB problem, um, I, um, I've wrote, I wrote, prepared this before I heard Frances Rigberg, and she covered most of my points. And I just want to reiterate that I think it is appropriate for people who have been impacted by the police and justice system, that it's appropriate that they, um, can participate in the board. And um, because they've, they've served their sentence, they're, they're back in the community, they should be let on. And, um, the CPRB is saying that they should be let on, that they should be considered, and so does the human rights. But the UPD FOP contract sidebar says no. It seems that the police have dictated to the city that this is non-negotiable. And why is that? Um, and I'm still wondering. Individual Urbana police have made public comments to previous meetings on other topics. So personally, I want to publicly invite individual UPD or retired to voluntarily make public input to defend why there cannot be even one felon on CPRB, even though there's so many of these statements about why this would be um, useful and necessary and non-discriminatory. Um, and we've heard from the city negotiator about the side letter in the past two meetings, um, that it was not for negotiation. Um, even though it's discrimination, I would like to hear from the police side of the negotiation why this is so and why UPD FOP insists on this. And I'm hoping to hear about that, and I'll be listening. Thank you for your consideration on this matter.
Thank you. Thank you. Next up is Sarah Nixon.
Hello, City Council. I took, this is Sarah Nixon, and I'd like to express gratitude um, for this evening's presenters from First Followers, and gratitude for Frances, or to Frances Rigberg, excuse me, for her unintimidated, principled refusal to stay politely silent while most of you voted yes to violate Urbana's human rights ordinance. I want to comment further on the proposal to turn Urbana into a surveillance state, the ALPR proposal. But I also want to address the critical need for Champaign-Urbana Wraparound Services Center. And I only have a few minutes. So I'll focus on that, um, first. A while ago, I spoke to you about the, excuse me, about my application for an R3 grants, uh, program, um, funding. Uh, this is a program that, as I hope you know, reinvests 25% of the tax revenue from cannabis sales in Illinois into, um, community, uh, programs, proposals, and efforts. Um, I proposed a wraparound, one-stop-shop community center that would be trauma-centered or trauma-informed, ACEs-informed, adverse childhood experiences. Um, I proposed it could be called the Family Peace Center or the Family Peace Law Center. Um, I requested a total of $81,000 for that proposal. I worked with the Family Justice Alliance, which I already mentioned to you as a nationwide organization that mentors, um, family justice centers, the installation and establishment of family justice centers all across America. I believe that such a center is not only critically, I mean, I know that it's critically needed here, but I believe that it could integrate very beautifully uh, with the program or the center that is proposed by the First Followers' spokespeople. My proposal was focused on the legal services side of the issue, um, and addressed community violence, disinvestment, and also incarceration, um, including parents in a reentry situation. Um, the goals were, are, and remain to support low-income survivors, both parents and children impacted by family violence, um, through free legal representation, to promote the restoration of relationships in families impacted by the incarcerative system, um, to fill the gap left by systemic disinvestment in economically disadvantaged communities. And I asked or invited council members to please reach out to me and have a conversation with me. And I would like to reiterate and again, ask you to do that. I would need potentially 10 minutes of your time to elaborate on the proposed Wraparound Services Center that, once again, I believe, could dovetail um, organically with the Community Violence Prevention Center that is proposed by First Followers, I think. If this is an emergency, it's too critical to continue ignoring the need for these services. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Serenity Dodge.
Hello. Um, I'm with Linda Turnbull, the campus. Um, I had a friend killed in 2020, and nobody has found the killer. Programs have been around longer than that, and they have not helped anybody. Um, but yeah. But yeah, we need to get
So you know, you unmuted me, Sarah Nixon as well. Go ahead, Serenity.
But yeah, we need to get them cameras up so that we can know who's been doing all this because I don't want anybody else to get killed. I don't, I don't like people getting killed and all that. I think everybody deserves a right to live. Yeah, that's all.
Thank you.
Diane?
Yeah.
If there's time, there's a letter from a constitutional bond.
Go ahead.
All right. Dear Mayor and Council, I support the automated license plate recognition installations for the purpose of saving lives and limiting the damage done by motor vehicles in our community. No one has a constitutional right to misuse a car to endanger others. A car is a dangerous technology, a fact that we recognize through the state testing and licensing systems. As a dangerous technology, driving on public streets is a privilege. If a car is violating the law and endangering others while through traffic violence or gun violence, using another technology to help identify such vehicles is entirely reasonable. Surveillance of the public streets and sidewalks by private corporations and people, including at least one of your public opponents to this proposal, who has even recorded audio in Illinois Street, is already happening everywhere. Automated license plate recognition is one case where the surveillance is publicly managed, extremely limited, and yet timely enough to save lives, hopefully in some cases before they are completely lost to the prison or morgue. In order to prevent racial and demographic profiling, the technology should be well distributed geographically and include locations with frequent hit-and-runs, violations of protections of borders, and other types of offenses that pose a danger to the life and liberty of others. I thank all of you for bringing this hopeful restraint on the tragedies created by the unlawful use of guns and cars in our communities. Audrey Ish.
Thanks, Marianna. Okay, I don't see any more.
I have a hand up and a letter to read.
Oh, sorry, James. Go ahead.
All right, this is from Katie Muir, who's a resident of Ward Seven, Silverwood. On July 1st, 2nd, 5th, 7th, 8th, 9th, 10th, 11th, and 12th, 2021, University of Illinois graduate student Michelle Patino Flores conducted small focus group meetings at Salt and Light Thrift Store located in Sunny Crest Shopping Center on Phila Road to solicit public input from some of the residents who reside in Ward Seven. Additional small focus group meetings were conducted with some of the residents who reside in the Steer Place subsidized housing complex in August 2021, where the public input focus groups convened in Silverwood in July and August 2021 convened to solicit public input for the City of Urbana Comprehensive Plan pertaining to land use, infrastructure, and development, the City of Urbana Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, the CAEPER, or to solicit public input on the utilization of American Rescue Plan grant funding. Thank you, Katie Muir, Silverwood resident.
Thank you. Are there any other emails to read? Okay, we'll move on to council input and communications. Council member comments. Grace?
Thank you. Just wanted to say thanks again for our presenters tonight, especially First Followers Group. I'm glad we could get them scheduled in since they waited all last week. Just wanted to bring up again that really important point that they were founded out of the need of community reentry and just recognizing the harms and consequences of police interactions, the justice system, and community neglect when people are released back into the community without the resources and all of the discrimination against them. So I think just big picture, it's really important to keep those things in mind with prevention versus reaction or punitive behavior, that there are consequences to criminalization and that prevention from harm on all sides is ideal, in my opinion. As far as the FOP contract and side letter, I agree that we needed communication with CPRB and the HRC along with council and the public. I would like to see more communication with commissions, the public, and council. And I hope that we can have discussions soon with CPRB about their ordinance, some of their operational things and some of their requests, since they just proposed removing the restriction of having a person with a felony on CPRB. And I'm not sure what situation we're in now with the FOP side letter. So I look forward to hopefully having another conversation on that topic. And then lastly, about the Women's March that was brought up, I agree that this is an important event and it seems like it's not really my decision in any way, but I hope that we can figure out something to assist them and ensure their safety during their event.
It's on James and then Shereen.
Yes, I too want to thank the presenters tonight, particularly, I'm very interested in the First Followers presentation and the one-stop opportunity. I think that bears a lot of examination. We recently had some communication with council from someone regarding ITV3 build-out of the fiber network, since access to technology and internet resources is an important equity issue. I was looking at those maps recently and I realized that there are parts of Urbana neighborhoods, parts of the city that don't even have a stake in the plan that ITV3 has for building out neighborhoods by people showing interest. And of course, those neighborhoods, as you might expect, are in underserved areas. And so I have reached out to ITV3 to understand why those parts of Urbana neighborhoods were not included in their long-term build-out plan and asked them to give an explanation. Thank you.
Thanks, James. Sharice, I think you were next.
Yes, my input is basically, I understand and I know how Alan Exorod feels regarding, and I'd like, first of all, I'd like to thank the First Followers and RPC and everybody for giving us those presentations and the information. Thank you. And Sheila. I wanted to say specifically regarding Alan, I know how you feel. I've had, in my neighborhood, two houses shot up, forcing, a lot of people have moved out, moved from my subdivision as well due to gun violence regarding what Reverend Underwood was saying about the gunshot detector mic things. I did, you know, kind of bring that up and I've said before, no options are off the table. However, the license plate recognition cameras, it's not about how, where you hear it, because we're going to hear it. At least I hear them all the time. But it is about just trying, it's another investigative tool to be used to solve a crime. We can't, we can't prognosticate on who's going to do what, when, or where. But we can try to at least find, try to find who did do it. And that's what the license plate recognition cameras are basically for. So that if there's vehicles in the area at a particular time, let's say 2:00 in the morning, when there isn't a lot of traffic, but you'd see a lot of, there's a particular license plate that may be helpful if nothing else. It's an investigative tool. And First Followers, I look forward to seeing your proposals and how you might organize a one-stop-shop type of building or area so that kids don't fall through the cracks. But this is an issue that is a nationwide issue and COVID definitely brought this to the forefront more than anything. But it's not just, it's not just about what the city can do, but it also has to be about what the community can do as well. So I look forward to seeing what your proposals might be.
Thank you, Sharice. J.
See if my internet will behave this evening. Speaking of expansion of internet services, I apologize, mine tends to lack. I would also like to echo the thanks for our speakers tonight. I think all of the presentations were really important for all of us to hear, including our community members also concerned about the lack of support for what is a very important moment in our country's history, as well as our local community in terms of the Women's March. So I would express the lack of a permit for that. The other thing I want to raise is this conversation about public safety is something that I know many of us have been prioritizing since day one, if not before. I have to reinforce that I am frustrated to see no action on the evaluation of public safety needs. I know folks are concerned that we're talking about planning and thinking about what this could look like. Some of this planning could have started already. And I think it's important that as we are evaluating options for addressing what is a very dire and real need, that we're still being mindful about what is actually based on any kind of evidence. I have started a lit review, this is what I do when I see a problem come in front of me around the license plate readers, and I'm kind of concerned about what I'm seeing. I will continue to do that evaluation, do the research before we make a vote next week. But really encourage folks to look into the research about the pros and cons of this technology and not just accept it because it's the first thing that's put in front of us. I want a solution that's going to be fast-acting, but I think it's also important to recognize that this is an issue that has been deemed a public health crisis. And so taking it as a public health crisis and thinking about things that are going to be preventative and not only reactive and things that are not going to potentially have long-lasting financial and social impacts on our community is really important. We are talking about a minimum $50,000 a year commitment to a program that we do not know if it will work. Anecdotes are important. We need to hear those stories, but I want data to back up why we should be choosing any option and how it is going to keep our residents safe in a way that will not foster potential for abuse or discrimination. So I want to continue to hear from our community members. I know there is support for this option. I want to hear more about that, but I also want evidence to suggest why this is the right solution for any proposal that's brought in front of us. Thank you.
Chris?
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to echo Jay's point. We did receive an email from the NAACP President, Minnie Pearson. And just wanted to notify the administration that town hall meetings be in the black community to existence plate readers. They went to a couple of town hall meetings.
Could you go back, Chris? Because you really phased out for a minute there. I have no idea what you said.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I just was saying that the NAACP would like to have two town hall meetings in the black community about how the license plate readers will not violate their civil rights.
Okay.
Did you hear that?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Any other council members wish to speak? Okay, I do, I do want to quickly respond to the comment about the Women's March. And I copied council members on the response I sent to the organizers, but I do want the public to understand as well. City of Urbana supports women's rights. We support freedom of speech. And ordinarily, we would have worked, you know, as hard as we could to make this, to issue a permit. But unfortunately, this event was planned at the exact time as a home football game. The march is scheduled from 10:00 to 12:00, start at the Alma Mater, to go down Green Street, end up at the Champagne County Courthouse. The football game is scheduled to begin at noon. Any available police officers, and those are folks who are coming in who aren't scheduled to normally work that day, are already committed to be at the University of Illinois games beginning at 8:30 in the morning. And at the time the permit came through, it wasn't even clear there'd be enough officers to cover that commitment. We do not have enough officers to provide the intersection control and street closure that this march morphed into. It started out as being on the sidewalk and then when the numbers grew larger, the request grew larger as well. So it is not that we don't support this cause. We do. I think this past weekend was an example of how this community comes together and supports human rights with the Pride Parade, et cetera. But this permit just simply could not be issued given the amount of time, the timing of the march, and the allocation of resources. And I regret that, but that's what we're dealing with. Plus, they were asking to close two major arterials that also carry football traffic now. Maybe less than what normally is, given the way things are going right now, but still, it involves street closures that just would not have been safe. So we're asking people to walk on either side of Green Street on the brand-new wide pedestrian pathways that have been built to cross at the controlled intersections and get to the courthouse. We also suggested that folks could try a different location. The quad can safely handle 10,000 people on the quad. The previous Women's March in 2017 was confined to West Side Park. There were not street closures or crossing streets, and it held thousands of people. There are other locations that can handle crowds that they expect and I think would be a great place to rally. But unfortunately, we just don't have the personnel to do it and the timing is just not possible considering that it's the same time as the home football game. Okay, we'll move on to unfinished business. And I don't believe there is any reports of the Standing Committee. We have the consent agenda and the committee was chaired by Christopher Adams.
Thank you, Mayor. So could the clerk remind me, on the consent agenda, can we vote on all three of these ordinances at once or do we have to take them individually?
You will have to read them individually, but you take one vote that will encompass them all.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so for the consent agenda tonight, the ordinance is number 2021-09-040. An ordinance submitting city
Chris, your connection is bad.
I suggest that, Chris, if you can hear us, if you could turn off your video, it might help your connection.
City and Police Review Board ordinance. Did you hear the first ordinance? Were you able to hear the first ordinance? Hello?
About half of it. Try it again.
I'm sorry, I'm having technical difficulties tonight. Again?
I would, I would suggest. Are you there?
I'm, I am here.
Phyllis, is he able to? Now we can hear you.
Okay, all right, I'll start over. Ordinance number 2021-09-040. Submitting city code, Chapter 19. City and Police Review Board ordinance. The FOP contract. Did everybody hear that?
Yes.
Did everybody hear that? No?
Yes.
Oh, you did. Okay. Ordinance number 12- Oh, you did. Okay. Ordinance number twelve, ordinance twenty-one dash zero nine dash zero four and and
Okay, you're, you're, you're cutting out.
Dash one nine three, graphic being parked on Urbana Avenue. Elm Street and Green Street. Did anybody hear that?
Well, I think what we heard you say, ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash zero nine dash zero four two, which is an ordinance amending Schedule N of Section twenty-three dash one ninety-three of the Urbana Local Traffic Code, limiting parking times on certain streets or public parking lots. Urbana Avenue between Elm Street and Green Street. Is that correct?
Yes, if you can hear me.
Okay. All right, let's try C.
Okay. I'll try third one. Yeah, I'll try the third one here. Ordinance number twenty twenty dash dash zero four three, and scheduled dash one eighty-three. The parking all times on certain streets or, and Bucy Avenue. Did you hear that?
And what, what I believe I heard you say was ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash zero nine dash zero four three, which is the ordinance amending Schedule J of Section twenty-three dash one eighty-three of the Urbana Local Traffic Code, prohibiting parking at all times on certain streets or public parking lots. Urbana Avenue between Elm Street and Green Street, Clark Street between Lincoln Avenue and Bucy Avenue.
That is what I wish, I wish you would have heard it.
Well, between the two of us, we got it. You'll need to, you'll need to move the consent agenda, and then you'll need a second.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Well, you'll, you'll make the motion.
Oh, okay. I'm making the motion that this.
You'll move approval of the consent agenda.
To the city council meeting? Yeah, for approval for consent.
Yeah, so you're, you're moving approval of the consent agenda.
I am, if I could.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you.
Moved by Chris, seconded by Charisse. Will the clerk please call the roll?
It was Chandra.
Chandra. Oh, Chandra, sorry.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you, Chris. We're going to run some broadband to your house. Next item is the regular agenda. There are no items on that. Reports, reports of special committees. Don't believe there are any reports of officers. Carol Mitten.
I just had one item. I just wanted to call to your attention that I believe you have received from the clerk's office, the bio for a very promising city engineer candidate by the name of John Zeeman, and he will be up for a vote on October eleventh. And if you have any questions between now and then, please give me, give me a call. Be happy to answer any questions, but we're really excited about, about this, this candidate. He's a, he will be a great addition to our, to our Public Works crew. Thank you.
Thanks, Carol. Any other officer reports? I just wanted to take a minute to thank the organizers of Pride Fest and the Pride Parade. I think it was a terrific event and a celebration in Urbana. I also wanted to recognize the work of our staff who helped make this happen, and worked very closely with the organizers to really plan out every detail. So, Bridgette Brohan, our Communications Specialist in Public Works, our Operations Deputy Director, Vince Gustafson, Troy Richmond, and several other staff members, community development members, Lily Wilcock, Marcus Ritchie, and Andrea Rudy, all helped staff the table for Imagine Urbana Input and City Information. And also wanted to thank council members, Chandra and her sister for walking in the parade, Charisse Hersi for walking in the parade, and her mother, Mrs. Hersi, for riding in the parade. That was a treat. And Grace Wilken for helping staff the table on Main Street. And I hope I haven't missed anybody, but anyway, it was just a tremendously wonderful day, and I hope it's the first of many celebrations in Urbana. Also, that morning was another, it was a busy morning for the city. The neighborhood cleanup took place. That's funded with CDVG money, and that was coordinated by Braden Belcher and Sheila Dodd, and also Vivian Petrot helped, and several other Public Works staff as well. So, the day started early for folks and ended up after six o'clock on Main Street, but it was all around a wonderful day in Urbana, and the weather was perfect. So, couldn't have been nicer. So, thank you all for helping make that a success. Okay.
To add Diane too, you had the Pygmalion Fest going on.
Oh, yes. It's on my notes. Yes. And that took things late into the night. Not too late, but late into the night. So, a great combination of events that drew people to Urbana, and actually introduced the city to folks who haven't seen it yet. So, I thought it was a great showcase of many things that we have here. Thanks for, thanks for that. All right, last item on the agenda is under new business, and it's Resolution Number twenty twenty-one dash zero nine dash zero four two R, which is a resolution authorizing acceptance of the staffing for adequate fire and emergency response, which is a SAFER grant. And we have Fire Chief Chuck Los and Deputy Chief Demond Dade here.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. First of all, I want to thank you for the opportunity to be in front of you this evening. Back in January, you passed the ability for the City of Urbana to be able to hire a grant writer to apply for the SAFER, which is Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response Grant. At that time, you passed the ability for us to spend up to five thousand dollars to hire this grant writer. We are excited tonight to tell you that we received that grant. This is the first time, I believe, that the City of Urbana has been able to receive a SAFER grant. We received that the first week in September in the amount of one million seven hundred nine thousand, seven hundred forty-eight dollars, to be used over the next three years to pay for a hundred percent of wages and benefits for six firefighters. The, I'd like to thank some people in particular. Deputy Chief Demond Dade, Administrative Assistant April Smizer, Local eleven forty-seven, for all of the work that they put toward this grant, and for the presentation that Chief Dade is going to offer you this evening. Our Finance Department and Administrative Executive Department for all of the support moving through this, because without that support, it would have been extremely difficult to move, move through this process. I've asked Deputy Chief Dade to assist, to answer any of the questions, and he and April have completed a tremendous amount of research to get ready for any questions that you may have. So, I've asked him to be here as well, as he's done a tremendous amount of that research along with April. So, again, I cannot thank you enough for your support in this process. Pretty exciting times right now, so thank you so much. And Chief Dade, I'm going to turn it over to you to, to answer any questions that the council may have on this, this, this grant opportunity.
No problem. Thanks, Chief. So, like you've said, you guys saw the memo, and if there's any questions that you guys have from that, please just fire away, or if you just want me to kind of rebut what you've said, I can go with those things as well. Yes, sir.
Um, just to remind us, how long is the grant?
Four. Okay, this grant is a thirty-six month grant, so it will last three years, and those thirty-six months will actually cover four of our fiscal years. As you've seen in the memo, the first year, we will incur probably about a ninety thousand dollar expenditure. But as it carries over the life of the grant years, we will see savings at the end of those thirty-six months. Yes, ma'am.
Can you tell me more about the savings? What that means?
Okay, yes. So, the savings, right now, the grant will cover the salaries and benefits for six firefighters. Currently, the cost to the city is if we bring on these six firefighters, it is less money for us to bring on those six to maintain the salaries and benefits than we're currently paying in overtime. So, and that overtime is only about fifty-nine percent of the total overtime. That's the, we only use about fifty-nine percent of the overtime figures to, to get that savings. So, I can't give you the exact numbers, but if you look on your, on the memo, when it talks about SAFER Year One, we give an estimate, and you got to remember, these are just estimates. There's all kinds of factors that go into this. But the first fiscal year impact, two thousand twenty-two, the first four months, we will see about a ninety thousand dollar expenditure. Fiscal year twenty-three, we think after the first eight months, we will start to observe about a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars in savings. And, and the savings that we're talking about, once again, is comparing the salaries and benefits to what we're currently paying in overtime. SAFER Year Two, you see the fiscal, fiscal impact of the first four months of year twenty twenty-three is about a eleven thousand dollar savings, and then the last eight months, about a hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. And, and those figures just carry on throughout the entire, entire time. You, you can read them there. And once again, these are just estimation, estimations. We believe that we may see more savings than that as, as the real numbers come in.
So, after, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mary Allison. Okay, after the, the grant runs out, we continue to employ these six firefighters. Ultimately, that will be also a savings, because you'll be able to, I'm trying to figure it, you know.
Yeah.
In your crews, or how's it, how, how would that work? I'm, I'm just interested.
So, so as we, if we choose to continue to, to maintain those six firefighters after the thirty-six months, we will incur the full cost of their salaries and benefits with no supplementation after that point. But what we're saying is, currently, right now, even to do that, is still less money than we're spending in overtime. So, the overtime savings comes in because contractually, there's a third, third, third time off slot that is awarded to the Local eleven forty-seven. So, in, in allowing those spots to be filled with vacation, it causes overtime. That overtime runs up into some, sometimes over seven hundred thousand dollars a year. So, and, and currently, as we speak today, there are fourteen members of the Fire Department that have time and age that could retire right now. By the time the SAFER grant ends, the thirty-six month period, the SAFER grant ends, we can see that number rise to twenty-one of our members. So, as people start to leave the department, the, the six that we maintain, if we choose to keep them on, they would also be on as Tier Two employees. They have a lesser pension obligation on the, on the, on the city. Also, we would be losing some of our members that have higher salaries, replacing them with members who would be at the beginning of their careers.
Okay, so through attrition afterwards, then we could possibly also continue to save. Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions for Deputy Chief Dade?
Yes, ma'am.
I, I think, I really appreciate how clear this memo is. I think it lays out the, like, the financial benefit really clearly. I'm curious about the impact on morale. Is that something that you could talk about? I would imagine having that much overtime could be pretty taxing for, for firefighters too.
Yeah, not only taxing, we, some of the savings that we haven't really, you know, delved into, because, you know, it could just be conjecture, but injury rates and all kinds of stuff, you know, when, when you start to see, we are, they already work long hours, and so when you start adding in overtime, the longer you're here, you know, all those things weigh on you, on top of the type of work that we do anyway. So, having, having the ability to not be forced into overtime as well, because some, sometimes we're into situations where not only is overtime voluntary, but it's mandatory. So, you could be on vacation. If, if, if you're up, you have to come back. So, there's, there's going to be a widespread effect that would, would help our members as well there too.
Thank you. Chandra?
Do the six incoming firefighters know that they're under this three-year grant? And how do, like, what's their perception of?
Currently, there's, there's no one who knows that, because we're waiting for a resolution. Hopefully, we could vote on this tonight, and we'll know. And then we'll put a plan together to bring those, those six individuals in. But yes, they will know that coming in. And, and so really, I couldn't answer that to you. But most of the time, because of the nature of our work, when people get called to know that they're coming to work at Fire Department, they're super excited. It's not just a, it's not just a job, it's a career and lifestyle change. And so, I don't think that will affect, you know, the individuals who are coming. They'll, they'll be excited to be here. They, they will also know that, like I said, the six individuals' jobs will be secure, because as, like, like Ms. Hersi was saying, if we choose not to maintain replacing them, they will still have their, their positions, and we will be choosing not to replace individuals who are leaving the department.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Grace, you had a question?
Yes, thank you. Um, hey, thank you for the presentation and bringing this to us. I think this is a really good proactive way to address your departmental needs and our community needs. And I was just wondering if there was any other updates or important things going on that you wanted to share while you guys have the floor and the attention of public and council?
Um, outside of this, no, unless Chief wants to chime back in about some things. But this is, this is really huge for us right now. So, part of the reason why we're asking for a vote this evening is because on top of accepting this, there's still, there's still a lot of work that goes on with accepting a grant of this magnitude, and we have several other deadlines for things that we have to do to get through. So, right now, outside of just accepting this and getting, getting the schedule, get this many people brought onboard at once, is huge. One thing that I can talk about is the, the preparation that Local eleven forty-seven has done in creating a FTO program, which is a Field Training Officer Program, so that not only helping them get through their training, but I mean, taking them and making sure that even after coming through Academy, and once here on the department, you know, all the training and everything that they need will get, will get done. So, it's a tremendous undertaking by, you know, several people in the department. And so, the, the membership is ready to, to bring these guys on as well, guys and gals.
So, I, I do appreciate the, the question of some things going on at the department, because as always, we have a lot of really exciting things happening. We appreciate the support of council and our Administrative Executive Department, and seeing us move through some of this. We just today received cardiac monitors. Our cardiac monitors move us to the next level as far as EMS response. Our, our basic firefighters will be trained on those cardiac monitors, as well as our advanced EMTs, which used to be the EMT intermediates. So, those cardiac monitors will, will start to put those into service, hopefully, start using those on the street by November. So, that is going to be a major moving forward, a major advancement for the City of Urbana, as we, as we look to advance the EMS partnership that we have with our transport agencies. We did that in, in conjunction with, we had a lot of help from Sheila Dodd. We did that in, in conjunction with, we had a lot of help from Sheila Dodd. Sheila found some money that was able to be used for a grant. And that grant money saved the city a lot of money. Those cardiac monitors are about thirty-two to thirty-three thousand dollars each. That's a lot of money. And Sheila was able to be able to, was able to find some money to, to help us out with that. So. Major kudos to her and, and, and helping us with that. We are advancing with our EMS training. We're getting back into training our firefighters to that advanced level of EMT response. As well. So that has been at a standstill for the last two or three years. And we're getting back into that to, to, to get some of our firefighters trained to that advanced level. We're getting two new engines. Those two new engines will be coming in. Probably within the next thirty days. We're gonna do a formal push-in ceremony. So it's the first time we've ever done that push-in ceremony. We're inviting our retirees and you're more than welcome to show up as well. These are the first two E-one engines that the city of Urbana has received. And we're anxious to get these things. We are very anxious, desperate, maybe. Chief Dave, maybe desperate might be the word, but we're, we're anxious to get these, these engines in service. So that we can kind of give some of our older equipment a little bit of rest. So those are just a few things. Got a lot more stuff coming up. So we'll keep you informed as we, as we have stuff. Thank you so much for that question. I appreciate it.
Any other questions on the grant? Mary Alice?
I don't have a question, but I'd be happy to make a motion.
I'd be happy to take a motion.
Alright, well, first of all, I'd like to say congratulations to everybody who worked on this grant. This is kudos to the department. Really, really putting forth all this effort and really making the fire department much stronger. So I would like to move resolution number twenty twenty-one zero nine zero four two R, resolution. Authorizing acceptance of the staffing for adequate fire and emergency response, the safer grant for approval.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by James. Further discussion? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
That motion passes. Congratulations, Chief. Congratulations, Deputy Chief.
Thank you very much.
And with no further business before this council, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.